All right, at this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doro.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Walshiger.
Here.
Trustee Lutke.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
President Farnerstill.
Here. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
At this time, anybody that would like to speak in public comments, please step towards the podium. Seeing as that we don't have any public comments, we'll move to our next item of business. Our next item of business, unfortunately, we have two proclamations for people that served for long periods of time to the village of Heartland. So, the village is very thankful to those people, but we're going to read the proclamations for them. They'll just be picking them up at a later time, but they're not able to be here to accept them. The first one being for Faith Candler. This proclamation is in recognition of 34 years of service to the village of Heartland. Whereas, finance employee Faith Candler has loyally served the village of Heartland residents for 34 years as deputy treasurer, having been hired on June 9th, 1986. Whereas, Faith Candler has provided excellence in customer service as she filled the role of deputy treasurer, preparing countless utility and tax bills, processing payroll, maintaining dog licenses, assisting in the preparation of the annual audit. And whereas Faith Candler has demonstrated dedication to Heartland's residents by providing guidance and assistance to residents with respect to any utility or tax billing question. Whereas Faith Candler has been an asset to our community, and while she will be missed, her retirement after 34 years of service is well deserved. Now therefore, the village board for the village of Heartland hereby proclaims congratulations and thanks to Faith Candler upon her retirement and encourages all residents to join in expressing their tremendous gratitude for her service. We ask that when anybody do see Faith, that they extend our appreciation for such a good job. Faith, if you're watching, which I'm guessing you're not, but if you are, you can come and pick your proclamation up from Darlene. The next proclamation we have is for Mike Gershewski. This is in recognition of 33 years of service to the village of Heartland. Whereas, Mike Gershewski accepted the position of general laborer for the village of Heartland Department of Public Works on June 8th, 1987 with a starting wage of $10.66 an hour. Whereas, Mike Gershewski, for his excellent performance and dedication to the village, was promoted April 1st, 1991 to lead man for the village of Heartland Department of Public Works. Whereas, Mike Gershewski, for his knowledge, skills, and abilities, was promoted December 16th, 2004 to operation supervisor for the village of Heartland Department of Public Works. Whereas, during his time as operation supervisor, Mike Gershewski participated and volunteered with numerous community organizations, scout troops, special events, Wisconsin chapter of the Public Works Association, and our local schools, honorably representing the village of Heartland Department of Public Works. Whereas, Mike Gershewski has been an asset to our community and will be missed. His retirement after 33 years of service is well earned. Now therefore, the village board for the village of Heartland hereby proclaims congratulations and thanks to Mike Gershewski upon his retirement and encourages all residents to join in expressing our tremendous gratitude for his service. To both Mike and Faith, thank you for everything that you did in making Heartland as great as it is today. All right, our next order of business is consideration of a motion to approve village board minutes from the February 8th meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the February 8th meeting. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. This is in the amount of $174,713.67.
I'll move to approve the vouchers for $174,713.67.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move the vouchers or to pay the vouchers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. We have operator bartender's license for Caitlin Poston. The applicant has successfully completed the responsible beverage service course. The chief of police has reviewed the application and approves it after deeming the request to be in compliance with Wisconsin statutes.
I make the motion we approve the bartender's license.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bartender's license for Caitlin Poston. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. That will be granted. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to adopt bill for an ordinance 125, 2021, and ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the village code pertaining to regular meetings.
I'll make a motion to adopt bill for an ordinance 125, 2021, and ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the village code pertaining to regular meetings.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a bill for an ordinance 125, 2021, and ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the village code pertaining to regular meetings. Obviously, this is the third reading of that item. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I believe that's four opposed. Why don't we do a roll call?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doro.
Nay.
Trustee Myers.
No.
Trustee Walshiger.
No.
Trustee Lutke.
Nay.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
President Farnerstill.
Aye. That motion fails 4-3, and the code will stay as it is currently written. The next item that we have on the agenda, second reading of a bill for an ordinance 8-8, 2021, and ordinance amending 46-978 of the village of Heartland code of ordinances regulating signs permitted in all districts without a sign permit. Again, that's just the second reading. No action has to be taken, but if someone did want to open discussion, any trustee has that right.
I just don't think we have any really footing to not follow the state and the federal law with regard to sign it for politicians. And, you know, the rest of it seems to be working okay, but I don't think we really should be the only one in the country that says they can't do that.
Thank you. Anybody else? I agree, Mike. I'm sorry, trustee Myers, I agree. That it was the second reading. The next item we have is consideration, a discussion and consideration of a special events permit.
So, following up the action from the last board meeting, there was some discussion about the different permits and applications we have. I'm going to use the word "application" and "permit" kind of together because somebody fills out an application in order to get a permit. So, can't have one without the other, so to speak. So, if I use the word "application" in one sentence and forget to use the word "permit" with it, please bear with me. So, went back following the meeting, last board meeting, working with our village clerk, taking a look at different options. We thought best to create the special event permit, which is hopefully going to capture multiple permits that we have that are really for the same thing. In other words, if you're going to want us to close the street, or you're going to want to rent the entire park to have a band, right now you would need two different permits for that. And so, I think the idea of the village is we want to make it easy for people looking to do that. We want to make it easy for the village board or the park committee, and then the village board to approve those actions. So, we tried to put all those things all together into one permit. Now, the exception to that, one permit that we drafted, and it's just a draft, it's just to discuss. The two exceptions to the permitting process that we looked at is, one, we want to be very clear that the cabaret license is a license that is linked to bars and restaurants. That is just a bar/restaurant item. It is for them to be able to have music at their facilities. The areas that they have approved to be able to serve can also be areas that they can have their music. So, the cabaret license needs to stay. It's an item that's contingent really to just those special uses. Nope. In other words, if a business, I don't want to pick on any business, I'm trying to find if a place that was a distributor of batteries wanted to have a live music, they would not have a cabaret. They would not qualify for a cabaret. You have to have a beer, you have to have a serving license in order to get it. So, cabaret needs to stay, and it's its own thing. The other item that we'd like to keep, we'd like to get rid of the major street use permit, roll that into the special event, but we would like to keep the small street use permit, which is really just for block parties. It's a very small permit, very simple, it's handled by the staff level. Somebody comes in, they get the signatures of their neighbors, and then we close off a cul-de-sac or a section of road typically on a Saturday or Sunday night for a couple hours. DPW puts out barricades, the police are made aware. It's a very low-key event. While some could get out of hand, they don't, and they're pretty simple. We'd like to keep that because that's a very simple, straightforward process, rarely used. But everything else, we'd like to roll into the special event. And in order to do this special event, if this is the direction the board wants to take, we would have to make several code changes because these other permits and applications are all embedded in the village code. So, before we go forward with all those code amendments, we wanted to see if the special event permit is going in the direction that the board would like. And that's kind of where we're in.
I think this makes a lot more sense. It makes it a lot cleaner for people to apply for it, and it's keeping it the same for everybody. So, it's real simple, one special event for anybody that's going to apply for it. I just, as I've discussed, I just think a few things need to be tweaked, and that would be in our ordinances and like you talked about. But I do like the idea of just having the special event and the small event.
The special event though does not include the alcohol licenses, is that correct?
No. It would be, it would wrap in, right. It would trigger then Darlene letting people know that if you want to serve at your event, here are the rules, here's what you can serve, here's what you cannot serve. So, it would encompass that, which now is a separate permit. You literally would have, for a certain event, you would have to get four different permits with us.
So, selling beer and wine would go with that?
It could. You could apply through the special event. You could apply. It's not automatic. Some special events might not want to get into the beer and wine sales, others it might be.
And you'd still need to have somebody that'll sign up to be the licensed bartender?
Absolutely.
To help out, I think what Ann is, I think what trustee Walshiger is asking about is, do they still need to get temporary beer?
Temporary.
And yes, they absolutely, you would never get the special events permit without having to get that if you were going to serve alcohol.
No, you'd have to get the special first before you get that stuff.
Well, it would all be wrapped up into the special event permit.
The special events, once you have that, then you qualify to apply for the rest of it.
Correct.
And that's all. Cleans it up a lot.
Streamlines it. You made a comment on the block party, and this is just, I could ask you afterward, but I know I'll forget. You said that DPW will go and set up the barricades if they need it. Is that free of charge? Because I know somebody's going to ask me.
I think it is. I think it is. I don't think we...
Our guys go out and then come go out and pick them back up? And we don't have, they don't?
Take them off the next morning.
Oh, okay. So, it'd be during work hours?
We do not charge for barricades during work hours, no?
Again, these are, we're talking very few, two or three a year block party is what we're, you know, these are not big, you know, this is not like a wait in line to get your block party permit on a Friday at Village Hall.
And typically, DPW, if they put the barricades, if I'm not mistaken, normally they're just laid there the day or night before, and then we actually set them up when it's time for the closing.
They deliver, you're right, they deliver and drop off. They don't set up and make damage. They just...
That's nice that we do that. I appreciate that.
So, how long will it take you to update all those?
So, if you have any comments, any feedback, Darlene and I are very open to taking any of that, and we'll tweak it, and then we'll bring it back to the board next meeting with some of the ordinance changes that'll need to be adjusted.
Sounds good.
Yep, it's a great direction.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion, or do you want to let it ride?
I think that's exactly what we're looking for right there.
So, you do not need a motion?
I do not, I think we're good.
Next item, we have discussion and consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with BSI Building Services, Inc., related to remodeling of the village boardroom. I believe they're here. The floor is yours.
Aye. Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Walgren, architect with BSI. I also have Justin Gailhausen, construction project manager, and Brett Heikola, account executive with BSI. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the latest progress of the design for this boardroom. You have all the images that we submitted last week, and I think, Ben, are you able to get the floor plan up on the screen? Over the past few weeks and months, we've been continuing to working with Tim and Darlene on some revisions to the design. We have made some reductions, which you'll see reflected in the pricing, but overall, still tried to keep the original design intent, which is why we started this exercise. Most of the changes since our last presentation were to the perimeter walls in this room. We've admitted any new exterior and interior windows, so we're working with the perimeter walls largely as they are. This room is still being transformed, but largely just within the room itself. So, on the floor plan, you can see the orientation of the nine-person seating area. The committee area is orientated to the north wall. On either side here, we have seating, flexible seating for the public, and we still have provisions for millwork and storage on the east wall. Ben, if you can jump one more slide. Pages five and six show the updated perspective views of the interior of this room, so I'm going to go wall by wall. The new north wall is really the focus of the room. We still have the nine-person seating area for the committee. The AV package is still unchanged from earlier presentations. We have provisions to mount the TVs or the displays on the north wall. We're showing the current 65-inch displays above the committee member. On either side, we have provisions for some decorative stone to give that wall a feature wall, and there's also provisions for, go ahead.
So, that means if we were to show something on the screen, we have to get up from our seats and turn around and watch it?
No, each... As you'll see in some of the images, each committee member has technology in front of them to show at the same time. There's also provisions, should you desire to install the village logo on either side of the front wall, we can make that happen for you too as well. The new west wall remains largely unchanged. We still have the two existing door openings, but in between, that's where we're going to relocate the millwork counter area, which will give storage. We can provide the beverage fridge underneath that counter. The south wall, again, remains largely unchanged in terms of openings. We're just going to update this existing door with a new door with some glass in it just to give the smallest connection to the outdoors with some glass. But we're not reconfiguring the opening, just the door itself. The east wall, what we're showing is the ability to work with you or a committee at the appropriate time to reflect any historical, either photographs, maps, images that you'd want to reflect in this room, should it be large format, smaller framed images. We have countless vendors and sources to portray that imagery on the east wall, or I guess any wall in the room, should you desire to do that. I know those are nice features in the room right now. So, that's really an update as to the design, where it's at right now. We're also here looking for, I guess, sign-off to move forward with the design, to complete the design, or full bid documents, to be able to put that out for public bidding. That would complete all the design, finished selections, furniture selections suitable for bidding.
What furniture were you going to be placing?
Brett's going to help with that question.
What furniture?
Currently, the budget is to replace the nine chairs at the front for the trustees, and then along with a podium. Now, there's a budget in there of $10,500. That's a pretty nice chair for each member. You know, if you are looking to replace potentially the chairs versus reusing these, we can kind of work with that. We've, you know, we're at maybe just under $1,000 per chair for each board member. Again, so there's a budget there we can work with without having this defined, you know, yet. I think we can work with it depending, you know...
So, then we're not going to have this table at all, et cetera? No.
That's correct. I mean, according to what they're showing.
Okay. And then my other question was on page 2 of 21. You had an 86-inch ultra-high-definition commercial display TV? Two of those?
Correct. Those are budgeted for that number.
Is that what goes behind?
Correct, yeah.
So, what about ours that we have already?
You could potentially reuse those, and then that AV budget would be less.
Okay. And is there anything wrong, any reason we can't use these?
Not necessarily. Just the opinion of our AV expert, I did ask him before I came here. He thought for the amount for the new displays, it would be, it's not a real big deduction and for what you're getting with that, since that's kind of what the public is viewing, it would be a good investment, but we could certainly reuse those.
Our intent is to start with these TVs. If they work out great, we're set. If people are in the room and they're not big enough, we might then have to be flexible. But working with the AV budget, there are going to be some tweaks, not to the number, but to the products. It still has to be locked down between BSI team and Ben as to the, you know, exact modulators and cabling and all that stuff. But that number is, you know, we're trying to lock in all these numbers for the budget to get a project. And then if Ben decides to, you know, move one way or the other on a piece of equipment, he'll be able to do that.
That's, the AV stuff is, I can't really see any other reason for doing this. I mean, this is the future, and that's the way we're going to do it. When you look at these, we have people watching, and I just want to make sure that, Ben, that this AV stuff is going to meet our needs because you're the guy that's going to run it, and I don't want to have to come back next year and have another budget saying, "Well, we need another $10,000 because we didn't get the right color keyboard." You know, I mean, I don't, that's about as much technology I know, but I guess that concerns me. I mean, that, first, having a chair that's more expensive than anything in my house, that was the first thing. The second thing is the, but the AV stuff really is a concern because that, I mean, why the hell would we do this if it's not going to be the best? Because it's going to just be growing. As soon as we put it in, it's going to be outdated.
Sure, we definitely bore a, since he's running, we've had a few preliminary discussions and Justin has with him, and we'll continue that and make sure.
Because we've been trying to update this stuff for 20 years. This is the first time we're doing it really, I think, you know, and it's so critical. And if that doesn't, if that flops, the whole thing is dead.
And we'll make sure it doesn't.
That's what these guys do, it's a good...
Okay, that's, we will watch.
We'll make sure we get it right.
Enjoy my chair.
Again, just budget numbers. We're, we'll work with whatever group needs to sit down and take a look and make sure we get the right equipment, but we're just basing it off of, you know, not picking numbers. Obviously, we've looked at different stuff and trying to evaluate it. In that furniture, we also talked about some chairs, you know, or some tables, some rolling tables, and BSI has been so great, they agreed to buy this huge table from us at a really high price. I am joking, that is not a true statement, but...
I don't know, I'm ready to get out of here.
But we may have a rummage sale with this table.
So, we get those heaters for underneath?
Firewood.
I don't care.
So, we are presenting the budget $281,397 based on what we've worked with, with BSI. Obviously, the construction stuff will go out to bid, so we don't know exactly what that is. Obviously, tried to find conservative numbers so that doesn't come in over, but we're going to go out to the marketplace, and there'll be different contractors that'll bid, and we'll have those numbers when we open those bids. So, right now, the project sits at $281,397, and our intent is to use, you know, cash reserve offset as we do with other capital equipment in the village and offset it over 20 years for the village, so it won't have any impact on the tax dollars, tax rates, so...
With the work done upstairs, was that at budget, below budget, or how did that come in?
That came in at budget, and that was, a lot of that was paid for from the COVID money.
That's why it's got a mask on.
That's why it's glass.
And why are we changing the door and putting a window in?
Trying to let some daylight in and some transparency of people knowing that this is a meeting place or that public meetings are going.
Will that change the, like, this right now, I think, isn't this a fireproof? No? Because it's concrete up above, right? I thought it was like the center in case we have a big emergency in town and...
It is our EOC for if there is a crisis in town. It is our EOC center, which just means the phone wires.
Okay.
There's multiple landlines that we don't pay for. It's part of the service from the phone company. There's multiple hard-wired phone lines here so that if we do have an emergency, we can plug those in and they will work.
Okay.
And we can run an EOC out of here if we need to.
But that's not a special door then?
Not, there's no extra fire rating. There's nothing in this room that makes it special other than you designate a room to be your EOC. a room to be your EOC. So, and that's what's in those cabinets.
I've seen.
Is those.
So how long will it take to get done?
We got a construction manager right here. I think Justin's up.
Originally, we had, I think we had the idea of between two and three months for this work to take place, and that was with the, you know, original full sculpt. I still would, you know, given the market and availability of materials and things like that, we've seen things kind of stretch out a little bit. A lot of people are busy and materials aren't as easy to come by. I would still say the two to three months is, is probably still a good, a good timeline for, for even the reduced sculpt. We should be able to get all that done within that timeline.
Thank you.
We'll also provide a schedule to the Village as well, that kind of shows a timeframe and, you know, that works with you, too, will work with you and get that timeframe and get it as short as possible.
So one thing that, and I'm glad that you guys, you know, brought it up, and I think it looks very nice, and I think it's something that we have to do, and obviously, it's not easy to trust, but like when you brought up the $800 chair, there's, I think, chairs out there that could, I'm just using this as an example.
Yes.
Try to hit that in the middle. I mean, a $300 or $400 chair, absolutely, because no, and just so you know, I mean, at the most, sometimes maybe someone might be sitting in them for, for four hours.
Sure.
But typically, you know, a person sits in the chairs for, for, let's just say, two hours.
Got it.
And I know that some of those chairs that are made for, obviously, you got the lumbar support, and if you were sitting there all the time, if you were a judge, you might really need that, but obviously, we try to, and you can kind of hear from the group, but people try to save money where they can. If you got a chair that's 300 bucks, but it looks like 900, get the $300. If you can see what we're working with here.
We'll work with you, and again, there, again, there's that range of everything, and depending on the city or the village, some, it's real important to have that chair, because, you know, that's seen by the public, and they want something that, you know, looks nicer. There's, there's all kinds of ranges. We, I just said that to illustrate, we have a little bit of, of room there to, to work with, with you.
Well, I think, I think it looks really nice, and it, you know, I think it looks really nice, and I, I hope that if it, it gets approved, that I think that it would be very good for the Village, so thank you.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Building Services, Inc., related to the remodeling of the Village Boardroom with the amount proposed of $281,397.
It's been moved and seconded to, to, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with BSI in the amount proposed of $281,397 for the remodeling of the Village Boardroom and to take the next steps. Any discussion? Again, I kind of said it already, but even for the, I think that this is a very good thing we're doing. I think it's a money-saving thing as opposed to down the road. It's like a preventative maintenance kind of thing. It's, it's bringing the AV up. I think that it also is a representation of each person and the care that they give that's sitting up here, and the care that they give to the Village. When people do see this, or when people see us, you know, in our capacities, I do believe that it is a reflection of us, and I think it was time for, for an update. This whole board is an update for Heartland over the last three, four years, and, and I think it's time for an update of this boardroom, so I'm very happy that it seems to be, well, it looks like it might be unanimous even here. But I'll call the question unless anybody else has any other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to come back at it again and again and again. We are a frugal group, so it takes time with us, but we appreciate your, your willingness to continue to come back.
Clock's run.
The next item that we have is discussion and consideration of a motion to award the 2021 Utilities Program contract to Always Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $193,429. Mr. Felkner, the floor is yours.
Dave Felkner, Utility Supervisor. The Village of Heartland annually budgets to do miscellaneous utility repairs. The reason we do this is we do them two years in advance, so we can get some settlement. If there's any settlement that's going to happen, it'll happen within the first two years, and then we'll pave that road after that. So we put it out for proposal, we received three proposals. Always Contractors came in the lowest at $193,429. So that, that $193,000 gets split up between water, sewer, and storm sewer budgets. So staff is recommending awarding the 2021 utility project to Always Contractors Incorporated for the sum of $193,429 and zero cents.
I move that we approve the 2021 Utilities Program with Always Contractors for $193,429.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Utilities Program contract to Always Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $193,429. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you for getting the three bids.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two. Ralph Redlin, who is on our Police and Fire Commission, I, I wouldn't so much call it a resignation, but has, in a timely fashion, let us know that he will, he would be up for reappointment this coming April, has let us know that on April 30th, that will be the end of his term, and that he would no longer like to renew. He served on the Police and Fire Commission for a very long time, and I just hope the Village also extends their, their thanks to him. If you guys see him in the next few months, thank him for, for his service to the Police and, and Fire Commission. And the only other thing I wanted to add is, as we continue to go through these times, even when, when it isn't COVID, we should support small business, but please continue to support the businesses here in Heartland, whether it's going to the pet store, or whether it's going somewhere to get something to eat, or whether it's going to get something for your house at one of the boutiques, or any of the other businesses that are doing some type of services or selling goods, please continue to support them. Chief?
Good evening. Our second vaccine clinic and last one will be scheduled this Thursday, starting at 5:00 and going until about 7:00. After the first week of March, pretty much all of the fire department clinics will be done. Will be a few people that will probably catch up on a few days with that weren't able to make their clinics. Otherwise, it was taken over by the county now. County is doing them at Expo Center, at Fairgrounds. Actually took my dad to one last week. It's very well-run. We were in and out of there in 30 minutes, so. They just contacted our Chiefs Association this week, and they're trying to put together a plan where they're going to run like a week solid of clinics and hope, hopefully getting like 10,000 people a week done. So they asked us if we'd be interested in supplying some help to them, and they're sending out contracts with how much they're going to pay us and everything like that, so we'll wait and see what that all shows up with. I got a grant application in on the 12th, the FEMA grants for the fire departments, so just waiting to hear on that, and I'm working on the annual report, so I'll be back with that shortly.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say I went to the Veterans to the Legion for the sleepout, and it was really cold, it was colder Saturday during the day than Friday night, but it was amazing. I didn't hear complaints from anyone that was staying out that night. And I went the next morning, and everybody was doing good. I don't know how much they raised.
They're still counting.
They're still counting, but it was just, it was a really nice event.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on that. I agree. Thank you to the community, but also to the DPW. Major thanks for supporting the Legion and the Sons of the American Legion with the barricades and the fire and the police department that stop by regularly to check on them. They really appreciated that. That was something that I heard a lot of, is that they really felt the love from the Village staff this year, so thank you for that.
I just want to take and commend and thank DPW for usual job well-done clearing the streets over the last couple of weeks. My travels gone over 700 miles in the state of Wisconsin, and I don't think any city that I went through does as nice a job as you guys do, get the streets done as quick as possible, so thank you.
Any other announcements? At this time, we have a consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to State Statute 19.851G to confer with legal counsel concerning strategy to be adopted by the Village Board with respect to litigation it is likely to become involved regarding outside building code violations at the Heartland Inn located at 110 Cottonwood Avenue.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to State Statute 1985.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call for the vote?
Trustee Anson.
Aye.
Trustee Doro.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Walsh Leger.
Aye.
Trustee Lucky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
President Finestall.
Aye. That's unanimous to go into closed session. Will take a few minutes. We'll go into closed session. We will be reconvening into open session. Currently, it is suspected that that'll be a very short reconvenience.
We are back in open session. We have just come out of our closed session. And now would be the appropriate time if any action were to be made or any motion were to be made from activity that took place in the closed session.
I would like to make a motion for our village attorney to contact the property owner of the Heartland Inn to bring the exterior of the building into compliance to repair, restore and secure the building. And also for our inspector Scott to do a walk-through for again the repairs, restore and secure of the building.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward as the motion was made by the trustee for restoring and securing the Heartland Inn and allowing the inspector to do a walk-through and for our attorney to contact for repairs to be made as read. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. There are no other items on the agenda at this time and announcements have already been made so the only appropriate action at this time would be to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you Chris.